Good morning. It is officially 9:30, so let's get rolling. It is Monday, June 16th. I'd like to call this Board Workshop to Order. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Natalie, I don't think we got any public input cards so far. Is that correct? All right, so moving right into our topics today. Item 3.01, the RSM Audit Update. Mr. Scott Ward.
Chairman, I'll go ahead and ask them to come up and speak.
Come on up, Team RSM.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Thank you for your time, everyone. Good morning. We have on the screen here our internal audit summary. This is the monthly dashboard that we send out. And we're going to walk through briefly, just a quick update, answer any questions you might have as to the status of our internal audit projects. Just want to remind you, this is the monthly dashboard that we send out at the end of the month on Friday. So the last Friday of each month, you should receive this. If you have any questions, concerns, thoughts, feedback on this, please let us know. We want to make sure that it's as comprehensive as possible to give you all the information you need. But if you don't have any questions up front, what I'll do is I'll have Eva walk us through each individual project and give you a quick status.
Perfect. Okay. So we are really excited because I think last time we were in front of you all speaking, we were talking about the scope for each of these different engagements. So obviously, since then, we've gotten started and we're well under our way for the first two items on this list. So instructional materials utilization. You'll notice on the last monthly dashboard that was sent out, we had a couple of next steps listed. Since then, some quick updates, we finished our onsite visits and we are working through our detailed testing right now. You also should have received an email with a link to the survey that we intend to send teachers upon their return back to school on August 4th. That survey, our team has developed. We've also gotten feedback from the instruction materials team to make sure we get their fingerprints on that as well. The goal with the survey, as you know, is to really get kind of that additional layer of perspective from as many different teachers as we can. So we'll be sending that out on the teacher planning week, once that starts on August 4th. Give them probably a week or two to respond and then we'll start taking in those results and incorporating them into a draft report, which will also include the rest of the results from our detailed testing and our walkthroughs and our entire audit procedures. So if there are any questions or comments as you are reviewing that survey, please let us know. We have some time before we're sending it out. So if there's any concerns related to that, you have our email addresses, so just reach out.
I think I saw that survey come through our email this morning. And so I had a chance to kind of quickly click. To advance to page two, I need to have answers on page one. Does it matter what I put in there? Just random answers? It's not going to like process that as data, right?
Correct, yes. So we know that anyone who's responding to the survey right now is just you all or the instruction materials team or us just looking through the answers. So we're going to be excluding those answers from the actual data analysis that's completed once the teachers respond.
And since I haven't gone to page two yet, maybe this is there. But I'm wondering if, I noticed a lot of it was from the perspective of teachers and their utilization of materials. Is there anything to capture the impressions or thoughts from the textbook managers at each of the sites as to have a, do they have adequate storage? Or do they have too much on their plate and they can't balance this with the 700 other jobs they have? Or do they have opportunities to go attend the trainings and things of the sort? You know, like that particular facet, their role?
Yep, absolutely. So I think you'll see some of those data points in the probably second page of the survey. And a lot of that conversation is actually what we did onsite. I think it was two weeks ago. We met with textbook managers directly and asked them a lot of the questions that you just posed yourself.
All right, great.
So definitely want to make sure we're getting that perspective as well since they're one of the primary control owners in the textbook management and utilization process. All right, for competitive procurement. Here again, we're working through our detailed testing. So you'll notice one of the last areas under key accomplishments was that we begun our detailed testing and we had selected our samples. Now, a couple of weeks after this last dashboard was distributed, we've finished our preliminary review of those documents. We typically have a follow-up request list that's sent back to management with anything that, any follow-up questions, maybe any documents we didn't see the first round and we just want to confirm they do or do not exist. So that's kind of where we are right now. I imagine this is going to be the first report that you all see. We are working with the team to identify which board workshop date we can come and present once this report is kind of drafted and we've gone through the appropriate vetting channels with management. And then cybersecurity maturity assessment. This one, you'll notice, we had some notes here on our intended kickoff day. I know there's been some turnover from the management team, so we're working around that. Want to be cognizant, there's always a ton that happens when there's changes in leadership. So we're trying to not step on any toes during that transition process. We have identified a new date in which we're going to get this ball kind of rolling again. That'll be the week of July 21st. In the meantime, the management team does have a list of our requests and they're working on those requests now. So that when July 21st does roll around, we're ready to go pretty quickly.
Perfect.
And I'll just add, I think due to some of those changes, the timing of this assessment is probably ideal so that whoever steps into that role has information to work off of as they begin their leadership role. Any other questions?
I am curious about the timeframe. I guess I imagine this was a much shorter process than it is, but maybe some of these things are just more involved. Or, you know, you mentioned leadership transitions and things of the sort. When do you expect to have, for instance, like the instruction materials back? I guess obviously it doesn't make any sense to send the survey out to teachers now when they're at home, you know, not checking their email, hopefully. Hopefully they're enjoying a nice summer.
Yeah, hopefully they're not.
We were almost anticipating we were going to have these results before April 1st, right? And obviously, that is clearly not realistic based on the scope of the work or the timeline to make this effective. What does that look like?
So timeline-wise, happy to go through details there. So for instruction materials utilization, you're right. We do want to make sure we're getting all of the answers or responses back from the teachers. If we send the survey now, there's a good chance we're going to get some responses, but it's probably not going to be representative because it's going to be teachers who are checking their emails during the summer. We want to make sure we're getting as many teachers as we can. So that one, the goal is for us to really be done with all of our procedures before the survey is even sent out. That way, when we do send the survey, we can give them a few weeks to respond, give us some time to analyze those results and then plug it into the draft report. So ideally, this is going to be if we send it out on August 4th and we give them a week or two to respond, we're looking at the end of August as to when this would be sent in advance for a board workshop. Competitive procurement, like I mentioned, that'll be the first one that's coming up. We're really in the tail end of our procedures now. So once we hear back on that follow-up list that I mentioned, it's really just a few weeks for us to prepare the draft report. That one, I believe, is going to be coming in July. Date TBD, working with the team now to figure that one out. But overall timeline-wise, from the time we start, there's kind of those three phases. That planning walkthrough phases, which is really dependent on the team's availability to meet with us. I know for instruction materials especially, the team has been amazing. We're meeting with them constantly and having several different walkthroughs with IT and then with the instruction materials department. So there's a lot of different layers to that. And then field work, if there's onsite procedures, then we want to make sure we're scheduling that at the right time. And then our remote procedures as well, that'll take a few weeks. And then recording the last phase, also want to make sure that goes through different channels. So kind of a phased approach there. But the timeline-wise, we're looking at late August and then July for the second one.
And then on cybersecurity, I know you mentioned you're going to regroup in late July. What do you think the timeframe is after that to complete that audit of the three?
Yep, typically takes, I think, between four and six weeks. So July 21 to four to six weeks after that is when we're wrapping up. But I think we'll have more specifics once July 21st rolls around and we do or do not have all the data that we need.
Perfect.
And I'll just add, you know, for competitive procurement, for example, we didn't actually kick that project off until April. So I would probably say if we can get through vetting and get into the timeframe that she just spoke to, we're probably a little ahead of our normal timeframe on competitive procurement, turning it around. Instructional materials, there's different things that impact our audit timelines. And, you know, with enough lead time and on the front end, we can usually account for those things. But when we're visiting multiple schools, five schools, towards the back end of the school year, the priority is getting the students prepared for testing, right? It's not having auditors onsite. So we're trying to be very cognizant of those timeframes. So that threw it off a little bit. But again, the goal is to have everything wrapped up by August. That's our timeframe.
I've been just intrigued at how many curveballs you get in terms of the timelines and processing that instructional materials audit. And certainly, it took us a few minutes to figure out what we're even trying to get to, what sort of conclusions or information that we're asking about. With that, one of the things that I did ask about, I think, a few months ago was about the digital side, not licensing component. And maybe one of the gifts that goes along with this extended timeline is that now, I would have never expected you to still be around in August, but maybe in August is another component of that digital piece. What does the rollout of that look like? And how quickly do people get access to those licenses? For whatever reason, it seems like there's always a little bit of a delay in making those go at the beginning of the year. I don't know. I don't know why. I don't know what. If that's a publisher thing or an IT thing or a just trying to figure out where kids are thing.
Good point.
Yep, definitely meeting with those teams now. I think we met with the IT team two weeks ago, maybe. So still sorting all of that out. Too early to say either way of what type of conclusions we may be seeing because I want to make sure that's kind of, any conclusions we do have are properly vetted. So I don't want to say anything here, but definitely chasing down those types of leads, yeah.
I was really hoping for like a trailer. Okay, I understand.
I see LCEA here. Did you interview them or speak to them at all?
I'm sorry?
LCEA?
No.
Teachers Union?
Oh, no, no, we have not spoken with them.
Do you intend to?
We certainly can.
Okay, they're in the room, so y'all can set up an appointment. I would encourage that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Sounds like we'll be speaking soon. Any other questions, comments, concerns on the ongoing internal audit activities? Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it very much.
Take care.
Next up on the agenda is item 302, the 2025-2026 District Staffing Plan. Looks like Mr. Zamora and Mr. Farnsworth kick it off.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, too. All right, well, it's a pleasure to be here. Greetings to the board, Superintendent. As we come to you guys with our workshop draft of the 25-26 district level staffing plan, which will be coming to our next regular scheduled school board meeting for approval for the final.
Excuse me, Mr. Farnsworth, just one sec. Do we have any sense about where we are with money at this point? I know, because they both relate to each other.
Good question. So late Friday night, they sent us the conference reports and some appropriations language. Obviously, there's a lot of change in appropriation language because they made some massive changes to some things. So our funding is, I'm going through it all right now. Obviously, there's a lot there, so we'll have a better idea. We know that we got a slight increase and we've got a lot of changes in language, so we'll weigh that out.
Did they pull the scholarships out of the FEFP?
They did. No, sorry, they did not. They pulled all of the safety language on scholarships. They killed all that. So most of that's going to be the same.
Good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Building off that real quick, at FSBA on Friday, they did their end-of-session, not really end-of-session, report because session's obviously not over yet. And the number that they shared was a BSA increase of $143 or just slightly less than 2%. Probably with some stuff thrown in there. Okay.
Okay. That may have been total FEFP increase, but BSA was not that much.
Okay, well, that was the number that they put on the screen. But I know you would certainly know better than them at this point, how they move money around.
One highlight for Lake County, though, is the $4.9 million was in the appropriation language. And of course, none of that's been voted on yet, so it could be vetoed line item. But for Lake Tech, they did get their $4.9 million, so that's a good thing for us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For Lincoln Park.
Lincoln Park.
Lake Tech for Lincoln Park. Doing their Lincoln Park.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, but those questions were kind of the guiding spirit of how we've arrived at today's presentation. A lot of tremendous effort was put in across all of the district departments, resulting in some pretty generous savings to the general fund. Also, there's been a priority placed on shifting some of the financial burden off the general fund when possible to other sources of revenue or grant funding whenever possible. And, you know, we're also continuing to take a hard look at our non-people changes such as contracts and other resources. And, you know, we'll continue down that path as we go through the year and move forward just in a real frugal mindset. We also had, you know, some things that come down the pipe through legislation like unfunded mandates. And you'll hear some of that as Mr. Zamora gets to his section. He'll provide a reminder on that. But overall, you know, the goal from the district standpoint was to make sure that, you know, we're adjusting our staffing in similar fashion to make sure that, you know, we're sharing that burden in comparison to any staffing adjustments that we've made at the schools. I believe we've been successful in that effort. And, but as you're aware, we've got to keep a conservative mindset when it comes to dollars moving forward. And, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, everybody's in that right frame of mind to take advantage of any potential savings as they arise as, you know, we just continue and try to function the best we can as a school district when we know we're not going to compromise on the services that we're providing to our families and kids. So we'll start with the first slide. Okay, so we start with the superintendent's section. You know, based on, she was able through attrition or retirement to sacrifice a senior executive assistant. And we'll talk more about that as we get to my department and how those duties are going to be absorbed and shared. In safety and security, we had a few changes there. They were able to cut one position through attrition, but also another program specialist position was deleted and a manager spot in turn was created. But this was because we have to have necessary credentials such as guardian training and things like that. And we know that, you know, on an instructional contract, you can't be a guardian in those types of things. So that was one of those changes. And then you see the additional guardian. One is for the new Mineola Horizons Academy as they come onboard. And then the other is for a charter school who's contracting with us for guardian. And that'll bill back, so that doesn't impact us. And then you see the net. So on each slide, just like usual, you'll see how it impacts the general fund and then you'll see other funding sources as we go through the presentation. And then as our last slide, as usual, we kind of wrap it up with the totals. Any questions on this slide?
So the charter is going to, we're going to recoup that, we're going to bill that back.
That is correct.
So it's not really costing us $96,000, right? So we're going to get some of that reimbursed?
Correct. That is correct.
So it's really like half that is our net impact? Okay.
Okay, so moving into some of my departments. The first change that you see is the upgrade of the administrative assistant to the senior executive assistant. That position is absorbing the duties that came out of the superintendent's slide that you saw prior based on the attrition of the retirement there. And in facilities, we had a director of facilities on the books. We're deleting that position. And you'll see through mine that this is one of those funds where it's labeled as capital fund transfer. That means those are burdens taken off of the general fund and that can be transferred out of the capital fund. And that's not taken lightly because we know we have, you know, capital budgeting and things we go through like our five-year plan and all the different maintenance needs of the district. But Mr. Ward helps us go through those fine tooth and make sure, you know, we're managing those funds also. So with that director of facilities position, you know, that's something we'll keep an eye on, right? As our growth is going from rapid growth to kind of a weird, not necessarily declimb, but we're kind of plateaued at the moment. And as, you know, we move from building schools to probably renovating schools a lot. So some of those challenges will change. But the hope is that we're going to continue to develop talent in-house. And I've got people that are, you know, really stretching themselves and trying to improve on their certifications and their skills. So if it does come time to revisit this position again, that will have some true Lake County blood in there that's familiar with all our facilities and will be able to do some great things when it becomes necessary. Then the grounds worker, too, they were able to, we were able to eliminate one grounds worker, two position. Those are our basic entry-level grounds worker positions. As you move up through our grounds worker ranks, that's when it starts being required to actually be able to do some things a little beyond just some mowing and weeding, right? That's whenever you got to be able to spray for pests, which takes certifications. You got to have CDLs. You got to have all these different things that comes along with, you got to be certified to spray for weeds. It's, I guess, a little more in-depth than what people think. So, but we've still got a good grounds crew out there working and that's one of our entry-level ones that we're speaking. Any questions on those? Okay, so the maintenance department, you know, this is, this is another area where you see a lot of those transfers occur. But a lot of these are some of our, a couple of them are the, some entry-level positions, a few of them. But then just a couple of our skilled trades there. We've made some leaps and bounds in being able to hire folks. You know, a few years ago, we were able, you know, we, you guys approved for us to have some allocations to really try and pick up on some of those trades pieces. And through, you know, negotiations and being able to do things and improve some of the salary scales that Mr. Zamora has poured over through the years, we've been able to actually hire plumbers and electricians and HVAC. So we're doing good in those. So we've just trimmed off a few that were there. But, you know, you're still looking at, you know, a dozen electricians, a dozen plumbers and taking care of that north and south region pretty equitably and meeting demands there. The one addition you'll see here is a maintenance support specialist. And basically, the improvements that we've made, I feel like, in operations across the board have been in a couple of different areas. One is just getting well organized. And the other is improving communication. So as we continue to really focus in and drill on how we're managing the whole operations side of the house, this position is going to allow us to, you know, watch our contracts a little closer, work with vendors directly to make sure that we're holding each other accountable for what we should be doing and not doing. That liaison to the procurement department and just really watching that paperwork side of the house and, you know, dyeing our eyes and crossing our teeth. So that's where that addition comes from.
So looking at that page, I see a lot of maintenance positions deleted. Is it because we don't have that much work or maintenance to be done? Or are these people expect, so that's my wondering, right? Because I know we've got a million square feet plus, right? So like, there's a lot of work to be done. How does this ensure that we don't end up with a situation where things are getting kicked down the road and/or work isn't getting done or doesn't provide a creative undue burden on the people who are still here?
That's an excellent question. So there's things coming, meetings to come that will kind of lean into this. But we've really done a good job of staying on top of our work orders and we're continuing to get better and better on closing those out. And I feel like when you look at our maintenance department as a whole, this looks like a lot, you know, when you look at, you know, the five positions there. But when you look at it as a whole, we do employ a tremendous maintenance workforce. So it's really just making sure that when, when we have the skilled people to actually do the job. So sometimes we have to contract things out. So that's what we're really dialing in and saying, okay, we can't let this hang hoping that our guys can get to it who might not be able to handle that job anyway. And, okay, we need to contract that out. We don't need to sit on it and let it and let it go forever. So it's striking that balance of, okay, these are things we can handle in-house and staffing appropriately for that. But also, where can we make some savings and contract some of the work out? the work out because it's a little bit higher level. So, you know, moving forward, what we'll be looking at for the maintenance and I'll be bringing to you guys in the future is we're doing a big capital, we're doing a big capital planning process to where we can plan for the future and actually get a roadmap to what we're doing. Because right now, it's, it, it just needs to be way more organized and move beyond Excel spreadsheet. We need to actually do some long-term capital planning processes. So we've got, my hope is that we're going to bring in a third party to assist us in assessing every major piece of capital equipment in the district. So there, there'll be more to come on that. But it's a, I'm, I'm very excited, as well as Mr. Wingo and the rest of my crew, on, on how we're going to approach maintenance with a fresh mindset. And that will last way beyond anyone that's sitting in this room. So we're, we quit running things to failure and, and we start scheduling things to make sense because that's what's going to save us dollars in the long run.
And that helped me too. I saw Mr. Mathias telling you, it was 112 positions. I think it's 108 now.
Yeah.
And that was helpful to see.
It gives a better picture.
It does.
And, and they work their tails off. They, they've done a great job this year and, and we're just going to continue to get better in those departments.
Does our, does our software provide some sort of easy reporting on length of time to complete a work order? Do you all look at that?
So we brought on, FMX was the new software that we brought on for work order system. And we actually attended a conference with Mr. Wingo and we're trying to make sure that we're just getting on the front end of that. But yes, it does. It shows in progress that from the time a work order comes in to it's in progress to here's perhaps a pending delay with notes in from the text on what the delay is, whether it's a manufacturing issue, a parts issue, whatever the case may be. And then, and then all the way to closing out and reconciling and tracking the parts behind it. So yeah, it, it does all of those things. We're learning to use that tool better and better.
So then you'll be able to just continue tracking it to next year to see if the timeline changes and how to, how to adapt for that if you're contracting or reduction staff made any impact.
Yeah.
But okay, yeah, I do get comfort knowing there were so many positions to begin with.
Oh, yeah.
But still, part of me says, well, gosh, there were so many positions. And I hear all the time of, well, this took a while to complete, or this took a while to complete because I know that these people have a lot to maintain. You know, it's, it's a big job.
It's a lot. Yeah. And then, and the one thing I, moving over to this side of the house a little more, the one thing I underestimate is how long it does take to get some things done. It's on, you know, whether you're waiting on an engineer or an architect or codes or wherever the case may be, it, it takes a little while. But, but what I want to be able to do is I get that phone call, provide the rationale, you know, liquidity split, this is why this is taking this long.
Sure.
Or this is why we're able to get it done so fast. I'll talk about my people all day long. All right, so you might be up. All right, we'll hand it over to Mr. Zamora.
I'm the lucky one that only has one slide. I keep it short and brief. In my department, I took the opportunity to do some restructuring in lieu of the upcoming unfunded mandate that we have with fingerprints. So in looking at that, we were a department that had two recruiters. So we deleted the non-instructional recruitment partner and basically updated the instructional recruitment partner to become the one recruitment partner for the district. And then we looked at the legal records assistant who handled budget and public records request for the district and deleted that assignment because I reassigned the budget duties to my administrative assistant. And the public records piece was created under a new job description, which is the employment screening and public records specialist. I'm going to have two of those. Basically, they're going to handle all, everything new because the fingerprint clerk position that I had and that job description was very old and we needed to redo that job description based on the new requirements. And go ahead and added the public records piece to it. So they'll handle both pieces as for the district. So that basically entailed having that credit to the general fund. When it comes to fingerprints, be aware that the new mandate, we are pretty much almost finalized with what we're going to start, the communication that's going to start with all employees as far as fingerprints are concerned. And we're going to start that process. That's probably going to be a projected cost over the next two years of about half a million dollars. In, in all honesty, it's just, that's what it would take to fingerprint 5,500 employees, pretty much. We're going to take it in phases. The ones that are, the ones that are, have the oldest fingerprints on, on record are the ones that are going to be fingerprinted first and so on and so forth. It's going to be by, by faces. But I did it to make you aware that that's coming. And that's why we have two. One of them will probably have some time that it will be, we'll be sending that one fingerprint clerk with a portable machine to different sites to start fingerprinting employees. Like, for example, I'll go to the bus, bus lot one day and make sure I get all my bus drivers. And I may do that on all bus lots. So just to give you an idea of what's going to happen, we did not start sooner because as soon as it started, every district started, just what we thought would happen was a lot of districts had started experiencing many different issues with fingerprints. So they finally come around and iron those out so that we, we feel safe that we can start. So, and that's where we are at this time. You have any questions?
I was just curious, you have a, you deleted the non-instructional recruitment partner, which was a whole position that did that work.
Correct.
And pushed it into the instructional recruitment position, which was also another position.
Correct.
I know you combined an administrative assistant. It was an administrative assistant that was moved to a senior executive assistant.
Correct.
But there was a pay increase in that position. This was not yours, but I'm just making the case that you're putting two positions together for one person to do?
Okay, in my case?
In your department, the recruiter is doing non-instructional instructional.
Correct.
With no pay increase?
The primary duties of recruiting were instructional. We included the non-instructional in the last year or so to try help with non-instructional recruitment. That hasn't been the greatest load. It's always been teachers. So we focused all our recruitment partnership on instruction. If we need non-instructional recruitment, that person can also handle that as previously done in the past.
And if you recall, the non-instructional recruitment partner came along through ESSR dollars to begin with, right? And then we had, we needed to, as we sunset our ESSR dollars last year, we needed, felt like we wanted to hold on to the non-instructional recruitment partner, partner for one more year. As I transitioned from Dover and we were able to fill some spots and we, we made a lot of headway in areas of especially with our TAs and some things we, we've done well with them. Our bus drivers also, we're starting the year in a little better shape every year and improving. So I don't think we'll see that a tremendous drop off. And what's funny is, I guess it's so many people are still in the system. We've all moved up a little bit or moved over a little bit. But it's, recruitment was our life for so long that I think we can continue to maintain those duties and, and support the person who's focusing primarily on instructional moving forward.
So we're gonna, so, so fingerprinting is going to be a lot more work?
Correct.
And we're reducing that position? We're taking one of those away?
Okay, the person that was in the fingerprint clerk position and took another assignment in another department. So that was my opportunity to redo that job description and I'm adding two, not one.
You're adding two? Okay.
That fingerprint clerk.
So the fingerprinting will fall under the employment screening and public records position?
That's what it is.
Okay.
I changed the title.
Okay, I got it.
And then I increased it by one.
Just for my application, what was the change? Because it seems like once you get through the 5,200 employees or 5,300 employees, how often do you have to do that?
The fingerprint?
Yes.
Every five, every five years.
Was it always five years?
It was always five. It's just they changed clearinghouse.
Oh.
Now the agency of healthcare administration is the one managing the fingerprints. They're the ones, they're the ones deciding employment at every school district. So before it was FDLE.
Okay, but if someone was fingerprinted a year ago?
Mm-hmm.
Because you changed, because they changed, institutions, we have to re-fingerprint them?
By state statute.
That's.
At our cost.
That's very special.
You are correct. Very special.
Okay.
All right.
Excuse me, I have one more question.
Yeah.
So if you have to do it every five years and we have a push to do every employee right now, does that mean that every five years you're going to be in crisis or are you going to do some at four and three as you move ahead?
It's just the initial screening has to go to the new screening because we have to take a picture of every employee as part of the new requirement. And then after five years, we do resum, we resubmit and we just tell the clearinghouse they're still an employee of ours. We don't have to go ahead and re-fingerprint them. It's just the initial one getting them in.
Got you. Got you. Okay.
And, and long run, the, everybody that's an educator, they'll be able to come into our district. We can just look up whether they've been awkward somewhere else and then we, they're, they're right in. So long run, it, we'll get there.
Correct.
But it's going to be a little while.
Five years from now when a teacher transfers to another district, we don't need to fingerprint them. They don't have that cost. We just look them up on the database and tell the database they're employed now in Lake County schools and that there's no cost.
Okay, cool. All right. There's light.
It's a long tunnel.
All right, we're going to welcome another guest.
We're going to welcome another guest, which would be Mr. Felner.
Go over here if you want. I have six through 13.
You want to tire? You sure you don't want to sit?
Yeah, it's all right.
You guys might need to help with some of the questions. Well, good morning.
Morning.
Right? Teaching and learning. And I know you want to get to the end, Mr. Mathias. We're going to get there.
Thank you.
Right? I know you want that bottom line. But on slide six, you'll see in our assessment accountability, that was a person who withdrew a resignation. And I want to just preface that I'm very proud of the team that we have in teaching, learning and leadership that took really kind of overall, everybody, Mr. Farnsworth said it from the beginning, that everybody took this seriously and said, where can we give and what can we look at? So although these positions are still needed, others are now picking up kind of whatever's been left over. And that is happening with that first allocation, that first position. And then college and career readiness, you're going to see that we've eliminated an admin coordinator. And it looks like we've added an executive director, which are all, notice that we deleted it out of the general fund and is now just provided with a different funding source in that dual enrollment section. And then the other addition is also from all the other deletions. So you see that cost savings in red. Any questions about that first slide?
Yes.
All right, slide seven, choice alt ed. You're going to kind of see the same thing. We've eliminated the jail position that we've had. We've kind of funded that through several districts and counties. And I know the superintendent maybe had worked with the sheriff's department on that position as well to see what that looks like in the future, but it was paid out of SAI. And then you're going to see the other cost savings that we have and then just the ELC addition.
I'm sorry, so we're not going to have that position? Or is it funded a different way?
We've eliminated the position right now, but we're working with the sheriff's department what would that look like? So we might have to just be a person that would do like home, at home instruction that they would go out, but we will not hire a full-time position for it. Those students will still be served in a different capacity.
Because we're required to serve them, right?
Yes.
We're required to provide ESE services and, but we are not required to provide the instruction. But we're doing that right now through virtual, an online system that's providing that service. They also have a liaison on the jails end that will provide the day-to-day support and services. So we're working on the agreement right now. Mr. Cole's working with us on getting a new agreement in place. I've met with the majors, I've spoken with the major who's over that program as well as the sheriff. So we're working together on that.
How many students are we serving right now that way?
Four.
Four? Does anybody track? I can't imagine there'll be that gung ho to go virtual. Are they, are we seeing? Is there progress monitoring on the part of those kids?
Yes, yes, yes.
The virtual instruction is a little different. We actually pay for additional services through Agenuity that they're actually getting a live instruction. So it's not that they're just sitting on a computer. There's a live teacher that we pay about $8,000 for to provide that additional service for those students.
That's good.
So is this the loss of a person or just the position?
It's a loss of a person. That person just shifted to a different position.
So they weren't really lost?
Right, a different role.
They're just confused.
Well, and we found a great landing spot for them. They'll serve us well. Yes, Dr. Luke?
On the slide before that, you kind of went fast through the program specialist with Kate. You increased the program specialist overall, right? So that, but just by one. So it went from Kate to just a program specialist position. It wasn't a designation? I don't know what page it's on. Page one of seven on the big packet is the one, the one I'm looking at, where I was trying to make sense of that, where you have two program specialists, Kate, that were deleted. And I see both of those deleted. And then I see an increase in a program specialist position, just one though. But then that's where that manager came in because you also deleted the AP program specialist position. So there are three programs, specialist positions that were deleted. One was added in a regular program specialist position, it looks like. And then there was a manager position added. So is the manager position maybe assuming some of the responsibilities of the two program specialist positions that were eliminated?
To a certain degree, yes. But that is going to be also a new position that we don't have a person in that will do a lot of, Francis tried to help me out with that earlier today. It would be a lot of the data entry things that we need during survey four and survey five, some of that summer calculations that we don't really have a person for right now.
Okay.
Mrs. Luke, what page are you on?
It was page one of seven on this document, on the college and career readiness section on the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Luke, I can, I can add to that on one of those positions, one of the program specialists, a retirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go to slide eight, school improvement. So I know this seems large with the five program specialists. We had several of those have been non-filled. Two of them, we've just kind of carried for that, that program for a long time that now we've eliminated. And then the other, the two that we've added as managers, we traded in a third program specialist that was unfilled to actually sustain that increase in, in salary. So it still was a cost savings, but that call, that comes really out of all SAI or Title IV, so not really a savings to the general funding. Any questions with slide seven?
So three were vacant, the other two transitioned into these roles.
Right, yeah.
Got it.
Right. Two, we've always had on the books, depending on how many schools that we had in status. And we've been pretty fortunate, so those were just really on hold. But we've had that third one. We've posted several times, looking for that third addition. Because some of the work, or a lot of the work happens 12 months out of the year, we've asked these two program specialists to work a lot during the summer. So in, in that transition now, going to the 247 helps us because they're doing the work already during the summer.
Got it.
I know we're hoping for great things with grades, but will these people now be reduced to just two people? Will they be able to handle the outcome?
That's a great question, right? We're anticipating that to be the case just because now they, they're more skilled. We've had years of training and service. So I know Ms. Dillon-Bayes believes that to be the case. But that is always something that we need to look at, you know, on a regular basis. All right, moving into curriculum instruction and assessment. You notice that one manager of special projects, the three program specialists and the one secretary.
Is that secretary the same position that's supposed to cover the front desk?
Yes.
So what is the plan to, to cover that desk?
I might have to look. Philane?
Two of the other, two of the other secretaries are splitting their responsibilities.
Two of the other Secretaries are splitting their responsibilities.
So two of those other Secretaries are splitting that responsibility.
Okay.
I just wanted to put it on record.
Hopefully, that should be a more reliable method. I know a lot of people are pulled away often from their other jobs or tasks. And hopefully, this will allow them, I guess, to remain committed to that work.
Right.
But I know that that's been a challenge there.
Right. And I think that's something that we also kind of talk with HR. If there is any employment or employee that needed to be shifted or moved, we would always accept that person for help to help man that front office.
And those three Program Specialists, they were those filled or those transitioned to school sites?
Most of those transitioned to school sites.
Okay.
I would say all three of them transitioned to school sites. Do you have a question, Dr. Luke?
Nope. I have a comment. Deva's advocate. Usually those people that are needing a place to land are people that have somehow made the news or gotten themselves in trouble. I have a little bit of concern about them being the face of the district at the front desk.
I meant maybe on light duty. Right, I was saying light duty. I was not looking. I was not thinking that. I hear you, and noted, right? Yes.
Okay, I did not do that.
Yeah.
Exceptional Student Education. Again, that's a little bit of, just so you can see, the four teachers from DHH. We really eliminated one, but then added the three back out of a different funding source. So that's just to collect the way that that looks. And you guys are studying and looking. So instead of just going line by line, I think you can see if you have any questions over that. Slide 11 is Federal Programs. And that was just the elimination of the Family School Liaison. And Slide 12 represents the three regions. A Program Specialist was eliminated from each of the regions. And then also, in addition, out of Title 1 funding, we were able to split some funding out of another Program Specialist to lessen the burden on the General Fund.
Is the plan for the DHH teachers for the Exceptional Student Education, are we gonna look at? We talked a little bit about that, and Mr. Stein and I have about contracting out as well. Because I know, I see four, and we went to three.
Yeah, the teachers, those are students that get more instruction. It's not the interpretation. So that, we need more interpreters than the actual instruction.
Okay. So different side. But we're contracting. Gotcha.
More contract interpreters.
I saw the DHH, and the bells went off in my head. Thank you.
Any questions on the regional? Regions 1, 2, or 3? Slide 13, Student Services.
I have a question, just hearing that, about the interpreter. So is there a program where that student, who has an interpreter, eventually is, can function with English?
Some students do.
These are hard of hearing, DHH. These are not language interpreters. They're sign language interpreters.
Okay, never mind.
Their sign language gets better, so we can have an aide instead of interpreter.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good. Good answer, too.
And you're gonna notice, if you're on the Student Service slide, you're gonna see a lot of that is millage or some of the general funding. And I did want to just mention that, really, out of the Teaching, Learning, and Leadership, there's really an $8 million impact that actually comes out of just general funding from that. And then just in that total savings, you're gonna see it's about 1.5 million that was reduced from that 8 million. So we do have a lot of opportunity to use different funding over Title 2, Title 4, SAI, IDA, because that budget's a little bit larger. But knowing the impact of the General Fund, we tried to move as many things out as we could at this moment.
Thank you.
So do we really lose four psychologists? Oh, so there's no one in them?
Yes.
But we don't need them to be able to properly staff, get kids tested and staffed?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Since we do need them. We haven't been able to fill for fully staffed that allocation since I've been in administration. So we're very lucky we have 20 this year, the most we've ever had.
I understand you have a hard time finding them. But my concern is, if you find them now, you won't be able to hire them, correct? If one magically appears, then you'll have no funding to hire.
That is correct.
So we haven't really been, this isn't really a savings because we haven't had this position filled anyway. We haven't been paying for it.
We've been budgeting the positions.
We've been budgeting, but, right. But then at some point through, we figured this whole salary lapse thing, right? That we, and then at some point, that money still exists at the end because we haven't paid it.
Correct.
And so.
Was there any consideration given to leaving at least one of those positions since they're obviously needed? And the reason we haven't filled it is because we don't have a candidate? I mean, I just.
So the conversation that Dr. Landry and I had along that same thought process was that we would go with this. We've been doing the work with the 20 and our couple of interns for several years. If we get in a position where we have someone who is available and interested in the position and has a position, then we would come back to Mr. Felton to talk about the addition of adding on. But for the moment, we've been doing it with the 20 and the couple of interns. We increased the interns last year to kind of help offset that because interns, we have had those, that we would address that as needed and potentially come back to ask for a position. But we're gonna maintain satisfaction with the 20 that we had for this year to see how that goes. If we get to a point where we need more, we would come back to the board with a request to add a position for a psychologist.
So is the millage fund feeling a bit strained or more things coming to millage that is causing us to have to reduce this amount?
We're watching.
Right, but is it strained or are more things coming to millage to offset this 313,000 departure?
Remember, a millage is one of the ones that goes up with property value. It's not reduced by the state formula. So we do see more increase in that than we do like the PSA. So we've got some increased funds. But we do watch that as we put the positions in to make sure that we're doing that.
Right, so, but with the increased funds, my wondering is why we need to cut these positions?
Because what we do is we find other General Fund positions that will fit in the millage pocket and in budget throughout the year. So if we create up some funding, we will find other General Fund positions.
Well, that was my question. All right.
The biggest cost every year is our law enforcement contracts. Those go up every year. And so we do need some savings in there so that we can cover the increased costs.
Okay.
For just one second, because I don't think, have we seen a decline of students needing needing mental health services? Dr. Landry? Have we seen a decline in our students needing mental health services? I'm inclined to go along with you and keep the slot so you don't have to come in. The money's already there.
Please keep one?
So.
Well, my concern is, if we take all four away, I understand you're coming back asking for a position. But if you don't have a position, you're not gonna advertise. So how is anyone going to know to apply?
So we wanna freeze it.
That would be my recommendation. I just know what a tremendous problem it is when kids can't get properly evaluated and get put into program. That's my concern.
Well, isn't this an area, too, that we contract for deficiencies as much as possible so something kids aren't getting seen? I mean, ideally, we've got them on staff, and I'm with you. I'd like to find four more as well. But I just want to make sure, for the record, kids are still getting seen as much as we can.
You just approved a contract at the last board meeting for all those contracted services, so we.
So do we contract psychological services?
If, when we need to, yes, sir.
So you could cut them, and the kids are still being served?
Well, 100% kids are being served, yes, sir. And I'm not sure how that contracted thing works as to where we need to answer. But what I've understood is I'd always need a position in order to contract for our services. So that money would come from somewhere.
It would come out of your salary.
And we move the budget out of salary in professionals offices. And then if they find somebody, we'll move the money back.
But if we don't have the allocation, wouldn't we still need the allocation?
Yes. Is there a likelihood of turnover in that position where there'll be a vacancy at some point regardless, you think?
I'm sorry, did I guess?
Are any of the 20 close to retirement or vacancy?
Of course, we can stay until they retire. And I don't have anybody up for retirement the next couple of years.
Perfect.
So would it be your recommendation for us to actually eliminate three, add one back out of that just to hold in threes?
Or hold two. I'd hold two positions.
I don't know what the number is. But I feel like there should be something held so that way, that's a placeholder for people who may show up and want to have that job or to be able to have that funding available for contracted services.
That's right, it goes either way.
Right.
But if you freeze it, it's gonna go to contract.
And just for clarity, if their contracted services is higher than the salary, we still continue contract.
Right, right, right.
We don't cut them off and say, you know, we did the same thing with ESE. Because the contracted services are more expensive, at some point in time, we just increase it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mrs. Cunningham, what do you want to do?
I would say to hold at least one.
I'm going two.
You can always come back with the other one.
Dr. Luke, what do you think?
I think one. I heard you say that you could come back and ask for another one if any of you was there. So I think I'm comfortable, especially hearing him say we needed the position for contracted services, so.
So one?
One?
Yes, sir, one.
Okay.
Okay. No, thank you. All right, and that's May 6 through 13. Any other questions we can handle at the end?
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Mr. Farnsworth.
I'm back. So as I've become more intimately involved with IT over the past few weeks, it's been exciting. And we've got some really great people. There's some changes as Mr. Weick departs for another district. Basically, what you see there, right? We will miss him. But the great thing is, is he's got some really talented people that have been operating in his work that are really great, and they're stepping up. And what you see is our Admin Coordinators. We are increasing their positions. Two of the Admin Coordinators will become Executive Directors. And then the other Admin Coordinator will be elevated to Supervisor. And will continue to function well. I'm excited about that department. And then lastly, you see the Manager of E-Rate and FEMA Management. That was the attrition. We eliminated that position, but we've come back. We're adding the Manager of IT Construction Logistics. I think honestly, they did a good job. They've done a good job of managing all of the demands that come along with the renovations and construction that we do. But holy cow, what a lot, you know, to set up those networks, to make sure all the fibers were supposed to be, to make sure that, you know, those construction managers and companies understand the demands and needs of our system. So I think that's a very well-designed position that's gonna be necessary for us moving forward to help. But it just needs to be designated that way, so. And then we'll move over to our summary slide. So you see how this is separated, left, right, and up and down? So General Fund overall, you're looking at approximately $2 million that we're looking to save from the General Fund or put in other areas. And then when you take into account all the other funding sources, we're right at 2.75 million district, across the district level. So a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into that work across every single department and just looking where we can tighten the belt, where we can share responsibilities. And like we do, do more with, you know, what the state provides for us, which is sometimes less. But we've got a great team to pull that off. So now, it will be questions, but I'll leave this slide open.
What page is the IT on? Sorry.
IT, on the big document?
Page 3.
Page 3.
No, sorry, page 4.
This is my first presentation where I can officially say I should wear glasses.
Yeah, I can't see that.
Watch me age before your eyes.
I'm gonna take that for next year.
I imagine this was certainly not a busy process. When you talk about the blood, sweat, and tears, I imagine maybe there were some tears in there especially. Because, I mean, it's hard when people are impacted. You know, we see positions on paper, but there are people in those positions doing different things and finding new homes and roles for them. Sometimes, I imagine, doesn't come super easy. So just acknowledgement of the hard work that goes into that and tough decisions to be made there. You know, and when we see all the savings here at the end, it looks like our budget suddenly is fixed. But we know that, you know, this is, it doesn't mean we have another $3 million to spend, I guess. You know, we're just still just trying to get ourselves back to a balance from what the state has, what they're dealing us. And why is the challenge? So there's the allocations formula or document or something, or your schools, the school side of things, still to come to us so we can see how, any sort of adjustments?
I think that flushes out more in the overall budget process as we go forward.
But maybe the formula doesn't change, but we talked about how classes are gonna be a little bit larger in size, right? So obviously, there's a reduction in allocations, even though the formula doesn't change. So I'm wondering, just what does that summary look like? And how do we see that? Because, you know, by policy, there's not a change. But clearly, there's a change when you have got increased class sizes or things of the sort. And I'm just wondering, you know, to understand the impact of that in schools and what that's gonna look like and what sort of savings that produces as well to help us kind of get on a track to survive what we're being handed. I don't think that answers right now.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Just to be clear, I'm just wondering, you know, at some point, do we get that summary? And what does that look like?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And, you know, to see the full picture? Because this is, this is part of it, you know, but we're still talking, we have 3,000 other employees in instructional positions, and their workload is going to be impacted as well, and I just want to have an understanding of what that looks like.
Very correct. And it was the priority of superintendent that the district departments step up, and if we're going to be making staffing adjustments at schools, we need to be making them at a district level also, so.
May I ask another question? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So, in the student services section, we will increase where it says the decrease of psychologists from four to three. I noticed that the interns also went down in allocation, and you had spoken about interns being a resource that you were using, and that they're coming out of the general fund. Is there a reason that interns have to come out of the general fund?
Sure. They have, so we didn't make a change to that funding source. Again, we know millage, with all the salary increases that happen annually, different stages, and stuff like that, so interns have always come out of general. They weren't moved whenever millage was opened as a funding source, so we didn't move them this time.
Okay.
Typically, we have two interns. Last year, we had three for four. Three is like a good beginning spot. Again, we only have three interns right now. We only had four last year out of a very unique circumstance. Three actually gives us that extra cushion.
Okay.
That we typically didn't have when we had just two interns.
Okay. It seemed relevant to the conversation we were having when you said that they were filling in, that we were decreasing them as well. So, okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Is there reasons that, I don't see any of our IT as coming out of our safety, security millage? Is there?
Typically, the ones that we qualify, they're coming out of capital outlay. The ones that are dealing with our security cameras, that they're doing our infrastructure, we reverse that as capital transfer.
Over to IT. So, part of their, part of this count on IT is coming from that millage?
Sure.
But should we not show that so we know what the impact is on capital?
Yeah, I tried to catch all those I could, but I didn't. Yeah, I can get back to you.
I mean, is it relevant? Seems like it is, I think. I guess it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, bottom line.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, there's no conversation on this last slide.
He had already gone over that.
I was still on the slide.
You have any conversation on that last slide?
Looks amazing.
You missed that one.
Did you have something else to add?
No.
Okay.
All right, that is all the topics we've got for discussion today. Board member comments, Dr. Luke?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
The only thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to express my gratitude to your graciousness in accepting the comments that, they're not meant to be picky, but those are things that I think we just worry about, and I, for one, worry about children not being properly evaluated and placed. So, I appreciate your graciousness and your entertaining, and I appreciate the rest of the board members understanding that, so thank you. And Madam Superintendent, I don't want to steal your thunder. I assume you're going to talk about your intern? Yes? No?
Um, yes.
Okay, then I won't say anything.
Okay. But certainly, you can acknowledge her.
Well, the superintendent has an intern that is very near and dear to me. I have known this young lady since she was in high school. She babysat my children, and she also worked for me in two Lake, two or three Lake County schools, I can't remember now, two. And I am, she is now a student at Harvard, and she's here this summer to work with the superintendent. So, I am just tickled pink that she's here. I would suggest to all of you to please introduce yourselves to her. She's a wonderful young lady. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Is that her here in the front row?
No, she's there in the front row. It's at my house.
She's not at Harvard yet.
No, no. We got to do kindergarten.
All right, all right. You want to put that cart before the horse, or horse before the cart? Okay.
Mr. Dudd.
Oh, yes. So, hey, that was, that was some wonderful news. I think you mentioned some appropriation for Lake Tech at Lincoln Park, and that got me pretty excited, because, you know, I had a lot of exciting stories to share as we went through our board member comments last week about graduations and all the pomp and circumstance that went with that. One graduation, I didn't, I didn't talk about then, just to kind of break it up and keep the celebration and thrill, keep on, to keep on going there, so I had the chance to attend Lincoln Park's inaugural graduation, and with that, I think we only, 16, 16 kids there, 17 altogether, 16 of them walked, and so, that was a lot of one-on-one conversations I got to have with parents, just personal, you know, conversations, and they shared the stories of their kids, and I can't tell you how many of those parents shook my hand and said, "Thank you," in the board for doing this, because I felt like my son, my daughter would have never graduated if it weren't for this sort of environment, to be able to get the support. The valedictorian, so to speak, talked about the opportunities, and, you know, as the school continues to grow, to be able to leverage dual enrollment and being able to do technical classes right there on the campus, and, you know, he was pretty excited about that future, and so, to hear, you know, Lake Tech being able to build that presence there on this campus, I think that's a critical component to the success of the overall mission, and truly, you know, when we talk about alternative school, it's not these, these kids, you know, need alternative placement for behavior, but just thinking outside the box, what does that alternative model look like to just meet the needs of kids, and this is doing it, and I just, I really can't even tell you how many, how many parents expressed that to me personally that night, so, anyway, thank you, board, for supporting this, and thank you, superintendent, for that vision, and it's been great, great first year.
Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Dudd. Mr. Mathice?
Yes, sir.
I only have one question, really, for the board. Looking at the agenda for July, it looks like we've got a few of our team out on Monday, July 28th. Mr. Ward, there is also a tentative budget hearing that day. Could that be moved up to the 14th, or does that need to happen on the 28th?
We've already reported that to the property appraiser, who's notified everybody else, and by statute, nobody can have a date on our date, so everybody's probably already made their dates.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it probably would be inconvenient for some other tax authorities.
Okay, well, then, we can leave it the same, then. We can certainly run a board meeting. I think the superintendent's out, and I think, Dr. Luke, you're out, the 28th, are you here?
The 28th, I'll be back in time.
Okay.
I think I get in at noon.
Then, with that budget, and then, let's just leave it in place. I was trying to get one board meeting in July instead of two, if we can make that swing, but we can leave both of them, especially with that budget hearing, then. Other than that, I've got no comments. Superintendent?
We have a meeting the 21st?
No, the 14th.
14th.
July the 14th.
But I'll be out the 14th.
You'll be gone.
I'll be gone the 14th.
That's fine.
Right.
Yeah. I didn't mean that.
Tell me the dates, you're going to be out, so I can cheer.
Superintendent comments?
I just want to thank all of our department heads for your incredibly hard work. It was a lot of hard conversation, a lot of, a lot of thought that went into that work, so, but they, they really stepped up, as our schools did. We asked them to look at an equal percentage of what we were asking from schools and reductions, and they were able to do that. And the reflected amount there, that 2.7, does not also take into account the number of contracts and services. They've, I've asked that all of those be reviewed, so this included, this was people we were talking about and positions, but there are other things we've been able to reduce as well. So, we are chipping away at that deficit and our loss in funding, so we'll continue the hard work to make sure that we continue to maintain a very healthy financial condition. Also, I want to welcome Natasha, and she's going to be with us starting this week, and we're excited to get to know her, and she knows that we're going to be connecting her. She's going to be attending summer leadership, which I wanted to remind you all, is this Wednesday and Thursday at Leesburg High School. Y'all are welcome to come. It's from 8 to 4, and welcome for a little bit of time, or all the time, whatever you can give. We're always excited to get all our leaders in the room and learn together. Natasha will be working with the Sobando, so we'll want to make sure that they get connected so that she can help with that this week. Also, just speaking of Lincoln Park, now, remember, they've already received the initial appropriation, I can't remember the dollar amount that Lake Tech received, so they have started this month with the renovations of the gym, so that will be totally redone, and then, we have the 650,000 that Lake Sumter received, that they'll be entering into partnership with Lake Tech in one of those areas. It's going to be a very innovative center, and then, there'll be the additional 4.9, which hopefully, will make it through the finish line, will be available to do some site work that's much needed, and then, also, help them to be able to work with the architect to kind of finish out that project with the rest of the facility that's there. So, it's really exciting that they've got the money now to do that, and there's still more that they'll, they'll need, but they have been very actively looking at grants and other opportunities, so we're excited to see that work. Business View Magazine has reached out, and they'll be interviewing Deanna Thomas from Lake Tech and I to do an article on Lincoln Park in their September issue, so we're excited about that, too, so. I think that's all I have this morning. Forget anything? All right? Good job, everyone. Thank you.
Very good.
There's no attorney here to make any comments, so I think we're good to move on from there. Any last comments, board, before we adjourn?